If I could have your attention. My understanding is that a quorum is present. This meet-- this special town meeting will come to order. And let's get right to it. The warrant for this special town meeting, if you could please have your seats as we're getting started. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on May 12th, 2014. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws, and the warrant was posted by Constable John Parr on May 20th, 2014. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. The moderator and town clerk have appointed the following as tellers for this town meeting. And I'm going to refer to left as my left, right as my right. On the left side, we have Mrs. Marilyn Hunt. In the center and stage, Rick Velez. And on the right side, Joanne Upham. All of the above have been sworn in by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, the town's general bylaws, and precedent of prior town meetings. While the town's bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon this volume, Town Meeting Time, as a standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings. It is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you would like to, identify your address. Please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone can speak. Generally, that's not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that a speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. A few words about behavior. Shouting from seats, booing and cheering individual speakers cannot be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in unacceptable ways will be escorted out. Such a member may not return. Do not lose your vote. Please stick to acceptable town meeting behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up the blue or yellow colored voting card issued to each registered voter when you arrive this evening and were checked in. If you've not done so, please go back and get your card. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of the vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I'll ask you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has yes and no printed on it. This is printed in case we have a ballot vote. We may not use it as a ballot, but we have it just in case. Do not lose your voting card. You can not get another one this evening. Just a word for rules of the meeting about motions to reconsider and rescind. Number one, a motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. Two, a motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had the information been available earlier. Three, a motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. This is a parliamentary ploy and will not be allowed. Four, a motion to reconsider must pass by a two-thirds vote by Lakeville bylaw. By past town tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I would like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium before we begin the special town meeting. I would like to call your attention to those residents of Lakeville who are active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. Those residents are Mr. Aaron H. Beach Jr. He was Call Firefighter in 1952. Mr. Charles E. Oral, Call Firefighter Lieutenant from 1961 to 2008. And Luke Leonard Jr., Southeastern Mass Regional Planning and Economic Development District Commission from 1970 to 2005. Industrial and Development Commission from 1979 to 1981. Vocational Education Committee from 1990 to 1991. Growth Study Committee 1991 to 1993. Volunteer Observer for Middleboro Lakeville Nemasket River Herring Fishery 1995 to 1996, 1997 to 2007, and again in 2012. Fish Warden for Middleboro Lakeville Nemasket River Herring Fishery in 1996, and again in 2005 and 2008. Taunton Watershed Alliance 1997 to 2002. Master Plan Subcommittee 2001 to 2002. Master Plan Implementation Committee 2005. Lakeville Planning Committee 2001 to 2004. Community Preservation Act Committee 2005. And Director of Veteran Services in 1988. If you'd join me in rising and just having a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have a moment of silence in memorial. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Finally, I would like to introduce those of us on stage. To my immediate left is Janet Tracy, Town Clerk, followed by Rita Garbutt, Town Administrator. Greg Corbo, Town Council. John Powderly, Selectman. Aaron Burke, Selectman. Mitzi Hollenbeck, Selectman. Michael Petruzzo, Finance Committee. Donna Winters, Finance Committee. George Volopoulos, Finance Committee. Maureen Candido, Finance Committee. Cindy McRae, Town Accountant. And I am Norman Oral, Moderator. Does anyone require a copy of the town warrant? If you do, please raise your hand and one of the tellers will bring you one. I don't believe I see any hands. Okay, so everyone has a town warrant. Now that I have-- now that everyone is sure has a copy of the warrant, I seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving to waive the reading of the warrant, please raise your yellow cards or and blue cards. All right, thank you. Any opposed to the reading of the warrant? I see none. Motion carries unanimously. If you'll give me a moment, we have a few non-residents that may or may not wish to speak or be asked to speak on behalf of various articles for the special town meeting. So I'm just taking a moment to get the list of those names to give you an opportunity to vote on whether or not they can speak. So if you just bear with me for a moment. At this time, it appears that we have Sean Preventure, who is with Department of Conservation and Recreation. Jeremy Peck, who is our Superintendent of Streets. And we have Greg Corbo, who is here with Cobbleman and Page as Town Council. Is there a second on the motion to allow them to speak? Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll just wait for Janet if those three names are jiving with her list. We have two more names. So I would-- we have a motion I actually already made with names and a second. So I'm going to ask someone to move to amend that motion to include the names of Christine Nash, Superintendent of Schools, and Fred Baker, Finance Director. So first, let's vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of amending the motion to add those names, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I rule that the addition of those two names passes by majority vote. Now let's vote on the original motion to allow those names in. Could you raise your cards if you would allow the motion as amended with all names? Thank you. Please put them down. Those opposed to allowing those names, please raise your cards. All right, thank you. The motion passes unanimously. And with that, I would entertain a motion for Article 1.
Article 1. I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from available funds certain sums of money in order to defray unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2014 for various accounts in the General Fund and Park Enterprise Account. All is set forth on the document entitled Article Number 1, Special Town Meeting Transfers, June 9th, 2014.
Thank you. Is there a second? I have a motion, second. Could you speak to the article, John?
Basically, article, if you look at the right-hand side of your paperwork on page 3, the money is being transferred to basically pay for snow and ice, which we typically under-budget each year. We under-budget because if you are running less than budget and you have a major blizzard, the state may say, "We will reallocate some money to you if you are running under-budget and you've been harmed by a blizzard." They might do that. So the bulk of the first, obviously, the first two items is wage and expenses for snow and ice. Veterans benefits are the next two items. Fuel assistance and benefits for medical. Although the items are fairly substantial, we do get reimbursed-- what's the percentage? Seventy-five percent of those amounts, we get reimbursed and the money goes into the General Fund. So it's not-- the reimbursement's not shown here. It's that we spent a lot more money, which is what we wanted to do, in helping veterans pay for their fuel and medical expenses. General government prior-year expenses. It's simply transferring contracted services into expenses. The police lieutenant wages has, basically, we promoted a police sergeant, Officer Perkins, to become lieutenant. So we transferred his hourly wages as a sergeant into lieutenant wages. And that came to $296,068.19. And the park wages account, we've transferred that into the park expenses. And the left-hand side is simply where the money came from. And that's pretty much it. A housekeeping article to pay for items that were not-- they were underfunded. Thank you.
We'll need a copy of the motion. But in the meantime, what is Finance Committee? Do you have a recommendation?
Yes, Finance Committee does recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 1, please raise your cards. This requires a majority vote. Thank you. All those opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. I see none. The article passes unanimously. Yes, sir. I didn't think that was a little light on the volume. So if anyone making motions or speaking, please use the microphone. Thank you. Article 2, do we have a motion?
The motion is I move that the town vote to appropriate $20,000 initially borrowed under and pursuant to a vote of the town adopted Article 13 of the warrant at the annual town meeting held June 13th, 2011 to pay costs of repaving at the police station, which funds are no longer needed to complete the project for which they were borrowed, to instead pay costs of repairs to the roof of the police station, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Do I have a second? Would you speak to the motion?
Yes, the money that was originally appropriated at town meeting in 2011, basically, there was the contractor that paved the police station parking lot ended up donating the materials and labor. So that basically, the $20,000 that we had allocated was no longer needed, and the $20,000 will be used to replace part of the police station roof.
Okay, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, the Finance Committee does recommend approval of this article.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? I see none coming to the microphones. All those in favor of Article 2, please raise your cards. This is a majority vote. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to Article 2, please raise your cards. I see none. I deem that the article passes unanimously. Article 3, do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the board deems appropriate, all or a portion of the parcel of vacant land located on Howland Road, Lakeville, containing 363 acres, more or less, shown-- 300-- What did I say? 636 acres, more or less, shown as lot number 2 on a plan recorded with the Plymouth Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 41, Plan 702, and being the premises described in a deed recorded in Book 18180, page 228, and to execute a deed and any or all agreements, assignments, certificates, affidavits, releases, settlement statements, and other documents as may be necessary or desirable in effectuating the conveyance, and to take any other action the board deems necessary or desirable in connection herewith.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, a motion, second. Would you like to speak to this article?
I would. We received-- the town received a purchase letter from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the DCR, which, I don't know if you folks have all that material as well. Do they have that letter out there as part of the warrant? They don't? I see. Okay, so if you take a look at the map, this is an opportunity for the town to sell a portion of land it purchased approximately 15 years ago to the state so that it will be put in perpetuity into a conservation restriction and become part of the state wild lands for conservation purposes. So this, in essence, was land that was purchased to sell for a similar purpose back then. There was no opportunity until now to do that, and we're asking you folks to approve this for the sake of seeing forward that vision.
Thank you. The Finance Committee, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak any further to this article? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just have a couple of questions. I appreciate the intent of this, of this motion to conserve land. My, my questions, I guess, and concerns are that it is not in any imminent danger of being developed at this point, and so already, it is open land. And by conveying the land to the state, we will be, in effect, giving over local control to the state over this piece of land. My other question, a question would be, how much will the town profit from the sale of the land?
Does someone wish to speak to that?
Sure. The, the offer that we've received for the, for the land is approximately $760,000. I don't recall, what was it purchased for? $739,000, so it's roughly $21,000 profit, if you will. I don't know as if we're in the business of profiting per se, but that's roughly the numbers.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, and so with the interest, can you tell me how much interest was paid over the past 15 years?
I, I don't know, but what's left on the bond for this? Is it, it's $150,000. So if we pay off the bond with the proceeds, we'll have, what's that, $610,000 roughly? Of usable revenue for purposes of capital improvements. This money, it's my understanding, would need to be used for, for capital improvements for the town. Either to pay off existing debt on capital items or to purchase new capital items.
Okay, so, Mr. Moderator.
I'm going to give this other gentleman a chance. He was up at the microphone, and then if you have follow-up questions, you can come back. Go ahead, sir. And please state your name if you could.
Good evening. My name is Sean Preventure, and I'm with the State Department of Conservation and Recreation. And I came down just to clarify a small point. When the article was being read, the term "conservation restriction" was mentioned. The state is offering to purchase the acreage in fee. We are not purchasing a conservation restriction. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And I'm here to answer any other questions folks might have.
Did you say, is that in the motion? Is that stated in the motion?
It isn't. I, I think I, I used the term "conservation restriction," and you're correct. That's not what hap-- that's not what exists on the land now, well, within, not this particular parcel. And it will not have a conservation restriction in the normal sense of the word. It will be under the complete control of DCR.
Mr. Garvey, you'd be next.
Bill Garvey, 17 Twin Oaks. First off, this land was not purchased to resell. You made a statement that was purchased to resell. That isn't a reason why it was purchased. The thing is, we did a study on, on this about seven years ago by the Dartmouth College for windmills. And back then, the study came back that you needed a preference wind of about 12 miles an hour. And the technology now changed a lot, that you only need seven miles an hour for windmills right now. And I can't see selling this thing to anybody. We're maybe 10, 15 years down the road. We could have windmills that could be supporting the school's electricity and anything else. And we already sold our school once down at this train station. I can't see selling it again. If you own a piece of property, keep it. When I was on the school committee, we bought 50 acres from the railroad where they went under. That's where the other school is because we bought property, not sell property.
Sir, state your name.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Marksom. What assurance do we have that the land is not going to be put into some other use by the state? I don't trust the thieves and rogues in Boston.
Would someone care to speak to the assurances of the thieves in Boston?
As the representative thief and rogue, the, the land will be put under permanent protection under Article 97 of the state constitution. Article 97 puts some extremely onerous steps in place to take land out of conservation, including two-thirds vote of the state legislature, which I'm sure folks know is pretty difficult to get.
Does Town Council have anything to comment about that?
Comment about what specifically?
About the statements of Mr. Preventure. I would, see, I want to know what's to preventure from disposing of the land in some way that's not in the town's interest. So are there assurances?
Other than what Mr. Preventure just said, which I think is a pretty solid assurance, I don't know as if Town Council could opine. I think you're looking for free legal advice, Bill.
Pardon me?
Nothing. I think that he's explained it's, it's a pretty rigorous process to undo this once it becomes parkland.
Well, I heard him say it. Is anybody else willing to say that that's correct?
I've read the same thing. I can't say that--
Okay, well, that's helpful.
--I could vouch for it, but I do trust that, that he's speaking the truth.
Maybe I should insist that you vouch.
The what?
Maybe I should insist that you vouch.
I vouch.
Thank you.
I, just to recap, it sounds like the restriction on further development is covered under Article 97 of the Mass General Laws. And it would require, part of that is that it would require two-thirds vote of the House and Senate, or just the House. Could you expound on that?
I understand it just to be two-thirds vote of the legislature. I'm not sure about the specifics, to be honest.
All right, are there any other speakers on this article?
I got up, Janet Scott, Rush Pond Road. I got up to ask the same question that Mr. Marksom asked. I just want to get clarity here in light of what Mr. Preventure said. It would take a two-thirds vote for the land to be used in some way that may not be the benefit to Lakeville. And I understand that that's difficult, but it's not impossible, correct? The land could be used for something else as long as there was more than a two-thirds vote. Is that correct?
From what he stated, I would say it is.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Keiko Oral, 120 Crooked Lane. So I just wanted to make one other point, that it's curious that the DCR has approached the town of Lakeville to purchase the land because for over three years, I've been working to open up Massasoit. Massasoit State Park is adjacent and near to Lakeville, and it is the only park that is closed in, in the Commonwealth. And so it's curious to me that the money is being appropriated here, but we're not able to get it into the Massasoit State Park. So if the representative from DCR would be able to speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I, I think that-- Well, I, I think that what happens at Massasoit State Park isn't pertaining to this article, so I'm just gonna ask that that...
I'll just point out the curiosity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there anyone else that would wish to speak? Yes?
Yes, I'd like to just read, at the special town meeting article on November 23rd, 98, the reason that was entered into why we bought it, and I'm just mentioning part of it verbatim, containing 636 acres, more or less, for the municipal purposes of preserving open space, protecting groundwater, controlling and regulating residential construction growth rate within the town. There are other items that are mentioned, but I extrapolated the parts that are in the beginning of that paragraph, so that our intent is not to sell the land to someone, hopefully, that's gonna develop it, that is not in the town's interests. We thought that it would be somewhat protected by tying it into the Free Towns State Forest, hopefully. So I wanted to just clarify what was entered into the November 23rd, 98. We, we also sent it out to bid to try to justify, somewhat justify, the price that the state had given us. There were no bidders for the property. Went back to a previous owner of the property and asked them if they were interested in buying it back, of which that was no. We then looked at alternate energy to say, can we put a 30, 40-acre solar panel farm in that area? We had the folks from Borrego solar down, and it was, nothing's impossible, but it was somewhat of a difficult proposition to do. It was on the wrong side of the railroad tracks. It can be done, but it would take probably years to get the proper approvals, and they had suggested some other land in the school. I'm not trying to muddy the issue, but we looked at the alternate energy, trying to do it on that side of the railroad tracks. It didn't seem to be feasible without a lot of problems tied to it. So we sent it out for quote, to try to verify the price, and we also tried to look at alternate energy. I'm just giving you the, the facts as, as to what was done ahead of that. And that's it.
Yes.
Dick Scott, Rush Pond Road. Just a couple of questions. One, is there a timetable for use of this, or are we just basically transferring to the state, and it's just gonna sit there until at some time they decide to do something with it?
It's a good question. Since we don't own the land yet, we haven't had the chance to do any kind of extensive planning, but the intent is that it would become part of Free Town Fall River State Forest, and thus part of the larger bioreserve as a whole. And I, I don't want to make any promises about what exactly will happen and when, but it is going to be there for passive recreation. And so it just, it will be conserved, and in terms of what will be done with it, not much, and that's kind of, that's kind of our point.
The other question I have is, I have a certain anxiety that's been reflected in some of the questions with regard to if a two-thirds state majority of the legislature were to decide on another use. It seems to me something like a poison pill clause in our agreement would be appropriate, whereby if the state wanted to exercise its right of a different use than the group here is voting on, that they should pay for that privilege. And it seems to me that if there aren't any foreseeable uses, they should have no problem agreeing to some type of number. For the sake of argument, I'd throw out a quarter of a million dollars for that privilege, so that the town at least has some seed money, if that were to happen, to go out and buy additional land at that time. And the last thing is, if we are going to transfer the, the property, it seems to me that we should at least be made whole. And in that regard, whatever we paid, plus whatever interest we paid, that should be the minimum sale price. So those are the, the concerns that I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just one point of clarification. That property now is zone industrial, because I know Mr. Potley said residential, but it, there can't be, there can't be no houses there unless it gets rezoned. It is zone industrial right now.
Yes, it was, it was bought to reg, controlling and regulating the residential growth rate within the town. We bought it to control the residential part, so it was transferred in.
Just wasn't mentioned that it's resident, it's industrial.
It's industrial.
It wasn't mentioned, though.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Frank Stewart, Crest Drive. Hypothetical, Mr. Moderator, or through to our learned guest behind me, is there anything in this Article 79, or anything on the laws that you're aware of, that would prevent the state, with a two-thirds vote, of turning that land or selling it over to Indians and putting the casino in there? Is there any kind of protection like that?
I have, I have no idea, honestly.
I think the, the easy answer may be, if I'm understanding you, a two-thirds vote could be for anything. It, would that be the case? Whatever was deemed as a different use, a two-thirds vote would...
Anything other than, anything other than conservation.
Yes. To recap, then, we, we have a motion that doesn't set a price, it just authorizes the selectmen to purchase and go into, go into negotiations, I guess. What is the wording again? I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the motion again. Oh. Go ahead, and then I'll read the motion again.
I thought that a price was mentioned in this discussion. Is there a price?
There may be a price. It is not in the motion.
I move that the price be added to the motion.
Do we have a second? So we have a motion to amend the article to include a price. The price, which was previously stated? I guess I would need that in writing as a motion to amend. How you would like to amend that article to include the price? Go ahead.
One of the flaws of adding a price to this is, and the reason why Town Council recommended that we did not add a price is because, to the extent that it, it will tie the hands of the Board of Selectmen in the negotiation, to, I think it was Mr. Scott's point of, of some sort of a provision that would allow more money to come to the town if the use was changed. I mean, if we set a price, that's it. I'm not going to say that we have all that much leverage anyway, because the price was determined through an appraisal process, but by setting it, we have no ability to negotiate whatsoever. So that's food for thought.
We'll wait a moment for the motion to be written.
Is he gonna amend the motion to amend?
Well, since I haven't received it in writing, I don't think we need to amend it until I get it written. What was the price for the motion?
$760,000.
While we're waiting for that, are you to speak to the amendment?
No.
Okay. We'll have to deal with the amendment first. Are you wishing to speak to the amendment?
Yes, Bob Palucci. I'm just thinking maybe we just put then a minimum of 760 and allow the selectmen to negotiate over any better deal they can get over that.
I, I think that's what we're gonna see in the motion as it's written out here. We will read the motion once we have it in writing. Could you read it? Could you read it one more time, as written, and then we'll take it from there?
Move that Article 3 of the special town meeting be amended to state a minimum price of $760,000.
Thank you. And again, just for the record, can we have a second on that as-written motion? Thank you. Would you care to speak further to the motion, Mr. Marksen, before going, or have you said enough?
Does anybody think I haven't said enough?
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the amended, to the amendment, to the article? I don't see anyone. Then, what we are going to be doing right now is, we're going to vote, this is a majority vote, to amend the original motion to include the price as a minimum of $760,000. All those in favor of amending the motion, please raise your cards. I can see already that I'm going to ask the tellers. Thank you. Please put your cards down. I'm going to start this over, and let's count this vote. If the tellers could rise and take a count, could you, again, raise your cards if you are in favor of amending the article?
Forty-seven.
Okay. All those who are opposed to amending the motion, please raise your cards, and tellers, please count. The vote in the affirmative is 91. The vote opposed is 25. I declare the motion to amend passes by a majority vote. I will then entertain any more discussion on the amended motion.
I have a question. It's my understanding, Linda Grub, that there's a payment that will be coming in annually in lieu of taxes that hasn't been discussed this evening?
Would anyone like to speak to that?
I can mention that, or reiterate that. If, if this property is purchased by the state, we would qualify for a payment in lieu of taxes, which is called pilot payment. I don't, it really would depend on a few different factors as to determine what that is, so it's tough to estimate what that would be, but for the sake of argument, let's say it's $5,000 a year. The town would get that in perpetuity, in lieu of taxes from the state. So that's another positive in terms of the town moving forward with this, is that we would be receiving money each year that the state owned this, this parcel.
And, and as chairman of the Open Space Committee, we have done some, some work with Article 97, and I'm not a lawyer, but it's my understanding that to remove something from, from under Article 97 starts at the local level. It would start first with the Conservation Commission, and there would have to be a majority vote there. Then it would come to the selectmen and have to go to town meeting before it goes to the state. And the Secretary of E O E E A has to approve it again before it goes to the state legislature. So it isn't just the House and Senate on the state level voting to, to pull it. It goes through a lot of hoops. And thank you.
I guess we'll, is it, yes?
I'll try to keep this quick. I just want to note that everybody's placing a lot of emphasis on the price tag of this land, and the sale of this land isn't the only way to measure the value. Money talks. This land is gonna add a lot of value to this town. We have a lot of empty, vacant properties that have been there for years, if not decades, that could be aided by the sale of this land. This land represents a way to increase the value of our town and the property that is currently empty in it. I'm not against building. This could help building, this could help industry and business, as well as conservation. So in protecting the land, I think we are also helping other aspects of our town, and we need to think about the fact that we're all focused on the price tag instead of the overall 40,000-foot view of what value this property brings to our town. If we are attached to a bioreserve, we will be inviting other industries to our town. We have, currently have very few places for people to stay, for people to eat, things for people to do. People in town are asking for services that are aligned with open space, natural recreation. I think this is a way to bring that business to our town and create the kind of community that Lakeville is asking for. Please don't get caught up on the price tag of this land, because there's so much more to this picture than just this little piece of the puzzle. Let's try something new. This is a great opportunity. I don't want to see us turn us, our backs on it, because we're stuck on the price tag.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you. I appreciate that sentiment, and I just wanted to reiterate that with the addition of state land, there can also be further restrictions, so that anyone who's abutting that land is also going to perhaps face those restrictions from the state. So while, again, this land is not imminently being threatened of development, it, it makes me wonder why the need is to sell it at this point.
Are there any other comments to be made on this article? I see one more.
Robert Marshall. Mr. Moderator, through you to Mr. Proventure, could he perhaps confirm Mrs. Oral's suggestion a moment ago? Would there, or could there be possible restrictions to abutters, as far as you know?
It's a good question, and as far as I know, DCR doesn't have any claims all over the right of private landowners that abut. I, I don't think there would be any restrictions on abutting landowners.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Through you to Mr. Proventure, are you aware of DCR or the state, under any similar circumstance, ever having put restrictions on abutters' land?
I am not aware of anything.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on this article before we move it to a vote? Seeing none? We will move the amended article to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, in fact, I'm gonna ask the tellers right now, just, let's go ahead and count this vote. To save time, we'll just get it out of the way and count it. So all those in favor of Article 3, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put your cards down. All those opposed? Thank you, you may put your cards down, all those opposed to this article, please raise your cards. The vote is 69 for and 50 against, I declare the article and motion passes by a majority. Article IV, do I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to accept the following provision of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60A, Section 1, which grants an exemption from motor vehicle excise taxes to former prisoners of war. The excise tax imposed by this section shall not apply to a motor vehicle owned and registered by a former prisoner of war, defined as any regularly appointed, enrolled, enlisted, or inducted member of the military forces of the United States who is captured, separated, and incarcerated by an enemy of the United States during an armed conflict, provided, however, that the excise tax shall not apply to a motor vehicle owned and registered by the surviving spouse of a deceased former prisoner of war, until such time as the surviving spouse remarries or fails to renew such registration.
Second?
Thank you, would you like to speak to this article?
I would like to speak to this article. We received a request from the Veterans Agent, we have one prisoner, former prisoner of war, who has moved into the town of Lakeville, and the request came forward to grant him an excise tax exemption.
I'm going to ask for Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you, yes, sir?
I'm going to suggest that the language be tidied up a little bit. Instead of, instead of having the locution, however, that the excise tax shall not apply to a motor vehicle owned and operated, that the, the first part of the article be amended to state the excise tax imposed by the section shall not apply to a motor vehicle owned and registered by a former prisoner of war or his, and/or his spouse.
So, again, this would be, are you making a motion, or, I didn't hear a motion in there?
Yeah, I think, I think the language would be a lot tidier, and I so move.
Could we have, again, the writing of the amendment, that you are making a motion? And I, yeah, I haven't heard a second. Is there a second to the motion? I have a second. Mr. Marksman, I'm actually being told by our town council that we're adopting a state statute. So the cleaning up of the language really isn't the purview, I guess, of this body, so if... Would you, would you be interested in withdrawing your, your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we are bound by higher authorities. Yes?
So say if the car is registered to the spouse currently, and they're both still living, does it prove the spouse from getting that?
Mr... Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Yes, I, I would read the statute as, if the, the former prisoner of war is still living, then that's the individual that's entitled to the exemption, and then, once that individual is deceased, their surviving spouse would be entitled to carry on the exemption, from that point forward.
Well, I think we're being put in the position of debating a state statute, which, again, is, is beyond what our scope and what the article, you know, we're, we're voting to adopt a statute. That's the vote for the motion. Yes, is there any further?
Yes, I suppose there may be case law on, on the issue, but for the purposes that you stated earlier, I don't think we need concern ourselves with it here.
Okay. Is anyone else wishing to speak? If not, all those in favor of Article IV, this is a majority vote, please raise your cards. Thank you, any opposed, please raise your cards. I see none, I deem the vote passes unanimously. Article V, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept any and all properties and rights and properties that the Lakeville Development Corporation has in the town of Lakeville, include them without limitations, options to purchase, rights of first refusal, and any other rights, title, and interest held by said corporation. Which corporation is to be therefore dissolved or to do anything in connection thereof?
Thank you. Do I have a second? And could you speak to the article?
Yes, this corporation was formed back in the mid-eighties, and this was developed, a piece of property that the town acquired, which was a Naffelt Meek Farm. And we developed this property, putting the roads in, and selling the property off. And now, I mean, a disinterest, because all the property's been sold. So people come to us for rights of first refusals and everything, and we have a hard time getting a quorum now. So we're going to dissolve, and we want to turn this over to the selectmen, because we have different covenants and setbacks and everything, that somebody has to carry on. So we figured the selectmen will always be here, hopefully.
Thank you, does the FinCom have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the FinCom recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the article? Yes, sir?
Hi, so this is Zinkowitz, just a question. The, the Board of Selectmen, they say the Board of Selectmen will be doing the setbacks and stuff like that for these properties. That's, that would be new to them. I mean, a, a new duty.
Let me ask Mr. Garvey his comments on that.
Our setbacks are a little more stringent than a planning board. So we're not going lower than your setbacks, we're higher than your setbacks, that's, covenants are a little bit better.
And, and accepting property, this would be, the Board of Selectmen would be accepting property on behalf of the town of Lakeville. Right, I mean, if they were selling property, we'd still have to go through a town meeting process and all that, right?
Right, for the town...
It wouldn't be like the corporation, it would be like the town.
Correct, I believe that's the case, that basically the town is accepting the property from the Development Corporation. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Seeing none, all those in favor, this is a majority vote, please raise your cards. Any opposed, thank you, any opposed, please raise your cards. Any opposed? I see none in opposition, I deem the vote passes unanimously. And I guess Article VI is next, do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the vote taken under Article 12 of the May 10, 1993 special town meeting, and to reinstate the vote taken under Article 20 of the August 19, 1985 special town meeting, so that the current wage and personnel board is disbanded, and the Board of Selectmen is once again authorized to act as the wage and personnel board, and to adopt or amend a classification and compensation plan at its discretion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second?
Would you speak to the article? Please speak to the article.
Oh, I don't, actually Rita, could you speak to this? I, I don't recall the history of it, and I don't have any notes in front of me. Oh, John will do it, he's...
I think basically, the highway depart, currently, the highway department, the library employees, the clerical employees, and supervisory employees have unionized, totaling 25 employees. So there is no need for a wage and personnel board to oversee 10 full-time positions in all the part-time, non-benefit eligible positions. The full-time positions that would be overseen basically by the Board of Selectmen, if this is correct, Rita, is the payroll processor, head dispatcher, police dispatchers, library director, executive assistant for the selectmen's office, council and aging director, animal control officer, superintendent of streets, building commissioner, and deputy fire chief. So that's 10 full-time positions only that need a, to be reviewed by the selectmen, as you will. The, we now have six unions within the town, we always had police and fire, and there are four additional unions that have been added. And, uh... So that's the purpose behind this.
Does FinCom have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the FinCom does recommend approving this article.
Thank you, is anyone else wish to speak to the article? Seeing none, move this question to a vote, it is a majority vote, please raise your cards if you are in favor of Article VI. Thank you, you may please put your cards down, any opposed to Article VI? I see none, I declare the vote passes unanimously. I would now entertain a motion to dissolve this special town meeting. Do I have a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, we, special town meeting is dissolved. We will immediately go into our annual town meeting. A quorum being present, this annual town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this annual town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on May 27, 2014. The warrant is posted in the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws, and the warrant was posted by Constable Valerie Bartholomew on May 30, 2014. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3, the general bylaws of the town, and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. We will be using the same moderator, tellers, so I will not go through those again. All of the above have been sworn in by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the town general bylaws, and precedent of prior town meetings. While the town bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures prior to town meetings, have relied upon the volume town meeting time as a standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings. It is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones, again, have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that you seek recognition from the moderator, that you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator at the microphone, please state your name. If you would like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator, so that the clerk may have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone can speak. Generally, it has not been an issue, however, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that a speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. Shouting from seats, booing and cheering, individual speakers cannot be permitted. Any member who interrupts town meetings in unacceptable ways will be escorted out. Such a member may not return, do not lose your vote, please stick to acceptable town behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion opportunity to speak of the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up your yellow-colored voting card, issued to each registered voter when you arrived this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated, so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has yes and no printed on it. This is printed, printed in case we have a ballot vote. We may not use it as a ballot, but we may just have it there, just in case. Do not lose your voting card, you cannot get another one this evening. Quick note about motions to reconsider and rescind, a motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted in the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might may cause members to vote otherwise, had the information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. This is parliamentally poy, and I will not allow it. A motion to reconsider must pass by a two-thirds vote by Lakeville bylaw. By past town tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I'd like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium. Does anyone require a copy of the town warrant for the annual town meeting? If you do, raise your hand, and the tellers will get you one. It looks like everyone has one. Do we have any other non-residents that wish to speak at this meeting? I will entertain a motion to allow Jeremy Peck, again, of Superintendent of Streets, Greg Corbo, Town Council, and Christine Nash, Superintendent of Schools, and Fred Baker, with the Finance Director with the schools. I would entertain a motion to allow those folks to speak. Second? Motion made in second, all those in favor, just say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, to allow them to speak. Okay, with that, do I have a motion for Article I?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate...
Actually, I'm going to stop there, in my rush, I forgot one thing. Can I entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrant before we get started? Second? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously for the waiving of the warrant. Sorry, Mr. Petuzzo, please start over with motion for Article I.
I lost my place.
If you could start from the beginning, that would be great.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $148,486 to pay the salaries of all elected officials.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second?
Mr. Petuzzo, would you like to speak to the article?
Briefly, the appropriation covers the stipends for the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, and the Board of Assessors, as well as the salaries for the Treasurer Collector's Office and Opposition, and the town clerk.
And for the record, is there a recommendation from the FinCom?
Yes, there is, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this article? I see none. This is a majority vote, I ask you to raise your cards if you are in favor of this Article I. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article One, please raise your cards. I see none, motion carries by unanimous decision. They have a motion on Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate seven million three-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-five dollars, appropriate six hundred ten-thousand-eight-hundred-one dollars from free cash, transfer and appropriate sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-fifteen dollars from the Mass- Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, transfer and appropriate seventy-one-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-seven dollars from the Debt Service slash Capital Projects Stabilization Fund, transfer and appropriate twenty-five-thousand dollars from the General Fund Tax Levy to Park Enterprise, transfer and appropriate twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred-thirty-four dollars from Park retained earnings, appropriate estimated receipts of a hundred thirteen-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-six dollars to Park Enterprise, transfer and appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from the General Fund Tax Levy to Landfill Enterprise, appropriate estimated receipts of two-hundred-sixty-three-thousand dollars to the Landfill Enterprise, transfer and appropriate two-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the Water Enterprise retained earnings to defray town expenses for the fiscal period July first, two thousand fourteen to June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, inclusive, as shown in the operating budget.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Petuzzo, what I'm going to do is read through, to break the budget down for you folks, totals of various sections, but before I do that, do you have anything you would like to speak to on this article?
Nothing specific, I mean, it's just the necessary, uh, the article's necessary to fund the town's operations for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
And for the record, FinCom's recommendation?
FinCom does recommend approving this article.
All right, thank you. So, what I'm going to do is read totals of various sections of the budget. If you have a question, or you wish to have any discussion on that section, as I have completed reading the total, please say the word "hold." I will make note of that, and after I've gone through the entire budget, each section, we'll go back to the sections that people have asked to hold and discuss them one at a time from there, okay? So... We will start. Selectmen personnel total: two hundred and twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen. Selectmen expenses: sixteen-thousand-five-hundred. Finance Committee expenses: nine hundred. Accounting personnel: a hundred and twenty-one-thousand-five-seventy-nine. Accounting expenses: seventy-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-five. Assessors personnel: one thirty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-five. Assessors expenses: forty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-five. Treasurer and Collector personnel: a hundred and fifty-thousand-five-hundred-eleven. Treasurer and Collector expenses: forty-thousand dollars. Law expenses: forty thousand. Total Wage and Personnel Board: seven hundred and fifty thousand. Oops. Seven hundred and fifty, my eyesawed. Town Clerk personnel: fifty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-three. Town Clerk expenses: two thousand one hundred. Election expenses: fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty. Registration expenses: ten thousand sixty dollars. Conservation Commission personnel: twenty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-three. Conservation Commission expenses: one thousand eight hundred. Planning Board personnel: zero dollars. Planning Board expenses: one hundred and fifty. Appeals Board expenses: three hundred. Historic Townhouse expenses: four thousand five hundred. Town Offices and Fire Station expenses: one hundred and ninety thousand. Town Reports expenses: six hundred. Cable TV Advisory expenses: one thousand. Other General Government expenses: fourteen thousand dollars and two. Police Department personnel: one million four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. Police Department expenses: a hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred. Fire Department personnel: nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Fire Department expenses: one hundred and nineteen thousand four seventy-one. Building Department personnel: one hundred and seventeen thousand nine forty-seven. Building Department expenses: five thousand two hundred. Gas Inspector expenses: eleven thousand. Plumbing Inspector expenses: sixteen thousand five hundred. Sealer of weights and measures: one thousand six hundred. Electrical Inspector expense: twenty-four thousand. Animal Inspector expense: six thousand. Emergency Management expenses: seven thousand. Animal Shelter Animal Control Officer personnel: seventy-nine thousand fifty-four dollars. Animal Shelter Animal Control Officer expenses: eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Highway Department personnel: four hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-five. Highway Department expenses: one hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and five. Snow and Ice expenses: thirty-five thousand. Street Lighting expenses: twenty thousand. Cemetery Services expenses: ten thousand. Yes. Snow and Ice personnel: fifteen thousand dollars. Again Cemetery Services expenses: ten thousand. Board of Health personnel: a hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-five. Board of Health expenses: nine thousand six hundred and sixty-four. Board of Health Visiting Nurse expense: two thousand. Counsel on Aging personnel: one hundred and ten thousand four hundred and three. Counsel on Aging expenses: twenty-four thousand five fifteen. Veterans Benefits personnel: thirteen thousand five fifteen. Veterans Benefits expenses: fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty. Library personnel: two hundred and five thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight. Library expenses: ninety-five thousand three hundred. Total Historic Library building: three thousand five hundred. Historic Commission expenses: four hundred and fifty dollars. Total of the Debt Service: one million three thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Total Regional Assessments: one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Total Unemployment: one thousand dollars. Total Employee Benefits: one million seven hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty-six. Total Property and Liability Insurance: one hundred and sixty-five thousand. Park Enterprise personnel: ninety-seven thousand eight twenty-five. Park Enterprise expense: sixty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five. Total Park Enterprise revenue: one hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred. Landfill Transfer Enterprise personnel: one hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four. Landfill Transfer Enterprise expense: two hundred and ten thousand thirty-six. Total Landfill Enterprise revenues: three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Water Enterprise personnel: zero dollars. Water Enterprise expense: fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Water Enterprise capital improvements: two hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and forty. Total Water Enterprise revenues: two hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred. That completes the budget, I did not hear any holes. I will ask for any other discussion, if there's anyone wishing to speak. I see none. This, yes? Anyone? No. This vote requires a two-thirds, so I'm going to ask the tellers to go ahead and count this, so we can make sure that we've made the two-thirds vote. So... All those in favor of Article Two, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All those opposed to Article Two, please raise your cards. I'll say zero? Thank you. I deem the vote passes unanimously. Article Three, do I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate for the use of the trustees for the County Cooperative Extension Service the sum of five hundred dollars, and to set the length of the term of the Town Director at one year as provided in the Mass. General Laws, Chapter one twenty-eight, Sections forty-one and forty-two.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Would you like to speak to the article?
Um, the article is a, a small item that we pay five hundred dollars for a lot of work with 4-H within the community.
Thank you, does FinCom have a recommendation?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator, the FinCom does recommend approving this article.
Is there any further discussion on this article? I see no one coming to microphones, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor of Article Three, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to Article Three, please raise your cards. I see none, I deem the vote passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for Article Four?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred forty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-ten dollars as the share of the Town of Lakeville and the Plymouth County Retirement Association.
Thank you, is there a second? I have a motion, a second, would you care to speak to the article?
This is Lakeville's, uh, fiscal year fifteen contribution, one thing worth pointing out is that by paying it this way, we can actually save sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars by paying the full amount prior to July of this year, um, instead of doing a semi-annual payment.
Thank you, and does FinCom have a recommendation?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator, FinCom does recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the article? See no one rising? This requires a majority vote, if you are in favor of Article Four, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to Article Four, please raise your cards. I see none, the vote passes by unanimous decision. Do I have a motion for Article Five?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million three-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-three dollars as a town share of the two hundred fourteen, two hundred fifteen Maintenance and Operating Budget for the Old Colony Regional Vocational High School District to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the Towns of Acushnet, Carver, Matapoyset, and Rochester.
Thank you, do I have a second? Would you like to speak to the article?
Certainly, uh, by any, um, uh, I, I think we used to just, I mean, they used to just compare, uh, Old Colony against other vocs, but now by any, by any standards, uh, uh, Old Colony's doing, uh, uh, is, is doing well, uh, the, the kids are doing well, they're performing well, um, the, the reason that, that the number's higher than you're used to is because twenty-four more students came from Lakeville this year, uh, which is a, you know, a sizable addition to, to the, uh, thing, but, uh, but, but, but the things are going pretty well there, good school.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approving this article.
Thank you, is there any further discussion on this article? I see no one rising? This requires a majority vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down, all those opposed, please raise your card. I see none, I deem the vote passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for Article Six?
Mr. Moderator, Dave Goodfellow, Baker Lane, Regional School Committee, I move that the town vote raised, uh, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve million one-hundred-fifty-six-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-three dollars as the town share of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Maintenance and Operating Budget for the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District, consisting of non-excluded debt assessment for forty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars, the excluded debt assessment for four hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, the operating cost assessment of eleven million one hundred eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and transportation assessment of five hundred thirty thousand... Sorry. Five hundred thirty thou- five hundred thirty thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the Town of Freetown.
Thank you, do I have a second? And Mr. Goodfellow, could you speak to the article?
This would be, um, obviously, the amount that the town would, uh, give the Regional School District for the, uh, operation of the schools in conjunction with, uh, that portion of money that Freetown gives also, um, this was the budget that was voted by majority at, uh, of the Lakeville, I mean, uh, the Regional School Committee.
Thank you, and, uh, Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation on this motion?
I'd like to make a amendment to the motion.
Okay.
I move to amend Article Six to change the total appropriation from twelve million one hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars to eleven thou- eleven million nine hundred ten thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars, and to change the transportation assessment from five hundred thirty thousand dollars, five hundred thirty-seven eighty-one to two hundred eighty-four thousand eight... and thirty-seven eighty-one to two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
I second that.
All right, so, we have an original motion made and you moved to change some of the numbers in that motion. So we have a motion to amend on the floor. I will ask the FinCom of their recommendation at this point, either on the original motion or possibly on the amended.
Mr. Moderator, the FinCom recommends approving the amended motion.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the motion. Would anyone else like to speak to that amendment? You were at the microphone, I'll go ahead.
That is gonna take care of the housekeeping and give the proper amount, reflects the same changes we, the error was made in last year?
No. So, what, what we're doing here is, we're actually amending the regional transportation assessment for the amount that's currently listed in the House Ways and Means Committee that's going to be debated by the state for reimbursement for the regional transportation piece. The state has upped currently the regional transportation reimbursement to an amount of approximately ninety percent right now, which is the highest it's ever been. What we are recommending is this motion to amend with the additional money, the change in the funds of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-four to be put into the stabilization fund. So when the final numbers are figured by the state and agreed to and signed into the governor's budget, that we would then come back to special town meeting, the two-thirds vote to return that money to the school district for whatever the final figures are.
Are we accounting at all yet for the money that the, we, Lakeville got overcharged last year in the numbers opposed to the Freetown number?
We are not through this particular adjustment.
Yes. Go ahead.
I believe the difference is, is that the district used the cherry sheet, cherry sheet estimate and the town used a number that was found in the FY-15 Senate Budget Proposal.
Is that the case? Can anyone speak to that?
We, we are using the amount that's in the Senate Budget Proposal at this time, current time.
So that would be, that would be the difference.
Is anyone else caring to speak to the amendment first?
Just a point. If we weren't trusting the state before to give us the money, why are we trusting the state now with our children's education?
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
This is just in relation to the regional transportation reimbursement, which is a constantly changing number. What we'd like to do is to avoid any ambiguity with whatever funds will come back to the town, and we are voting to put the remaining amount into stabilization pending the final budget that comes out from the state.
May I ask an, oh, Maria Martin?
Yes.
Maria Prony Martin, oh, seven-seater drive, may I ask another question?
Sure, can.
Is Freetown in agree with this? Will we be getting the money for Freetown, it's gonna go to special town meeting, which means it could not, there's a possibility of it not be appropriating, and then comes out of the regional budget, which is just like the town, it has a stabilization fund, they call it something different, but it would have to come out of that. So more money would be coming out of the budget that affects the children of Lakeville. We voted an override last year to help the schools. We were told by the selectmen, there was a plan, a three-year plan. This three-year plan is not even three years over and we're still not getting the money. Large class, not large, okay, but they're bigger class sizes than Freetown had. Freetown did not do an override and Lakeville children are the ones suffering. Twenty-five children in the second grade, I know everybody's saying, well, that's not much, but it is. And I'm very worried about class size, extremely worried, and yes, I do teach in your schools.
To speak to that?
Yes.
We are only looking at the regional transportation piece, which is the one final piece that the state has not decided. We are not adjusting the operating budget as voted by the school committee in a majority vote. So we are only looking at the regional transportation piece and we're committing through an additional town meeting that the selectmen would certainly be supporting the two-thirds vote to ensure that the transportation money goes to the school district.
While we're waiting for the next speaker, could you send the motion to amend down? Thank you. Yes?
Yes. Actually, the question that Maria asked just a moment ago, one of them, I didn't hear the answer to, and that is, if we make this amendment here, what happens if Freetown decides not to? That, as I understood Maria's point, it would then make a deeper cut into the school budget. Number one, is that correct? And number two, is Freetown ready, willing, and able to go along with the same type of proposal?
So, to speak to that, what, it's really, what we're looking at is the state has given us additional aid, and that's what we're looking to ensure that the money stays in the Town of Lakeville, if the state is giving additional funds to fund specifically regional transportation within the district. The same fact pattern would follow for Freetown, they vote at their town meeting next week. So if the state does come in with their final figures as they've listed currently, then that's the amount that would be coming from the state. It wouldn't be coming from either town, it would be reimbursement funds from the state.
Okay. Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Clarification. So then, whatever we vote here tonight does not necessarily, I'm asking, partner with whatever Freetown does, this is totally separate, and one vote would not be impacted by the other, is that correct?
From what I understand, this is just the regional transportation piece. The operating budget is the one that both towns have agreed on the same number.
Okay. I think I understand now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this? I see no one rising. Just for clarification, I will reread the motion to amend. It says, "I move to amend Article Six to change the total appropriation from twelve million, one fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars to eleven million, nine hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine, and to change the transportation assessment from five hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars to two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars." This motion to amend requires a majority vote. I will ask you to raise your cards and we'll see if we can do it visually, if not, I will ask the tellers, but let's see if I can tell by visual. So if you are in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. If you're opposed to the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. I declare that the amendment passes by majority. Therefore, what we need to vote on next is the amended motion. Let me just reread that one for you, so, for the record. "I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve, of, sum of eleven million, nine hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars as the town's share of the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen maintenance and operating budget for the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District, consisting of the non-excluded debt assessment of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars, the excluded debt assessment of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, the operating cost assessment of eleven million, one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and the transportation assessment of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight twenty-seven dollars, to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purposes by the Town of Freetown." Does anyone else wish to speak to the amended article?
Hi. Louise Richard, thirteen Lakeside Ave. Maybe I just don't understand these numbers, but if you're only changing the transportation, why is the twelve million changing? Because in the article, it does say excluding transportation. So why is that one million changing, the twelve million? Why are you reducing that to eleven-nine if it's already excluded in the language and you've already lowered that?
So, the total of the four-
Could you speak on that? Yeah, go ahead and speak.
Yeah, sorry. The, the total of the four numbers, when you reduce the regional transportation, totals to the eleven-nine. Without reducing it, it's at the twelve, the twelve thousand, twelve million. So it's just adding the four numbers together.
So, as I understand it, when the one number changes, maybe the language doesn't show it, but the total includes that?
So what you're saying is that the number, the twelve million, one fifty-six, two eighty-three, also includes transportation in that, and then on top of that, there's other monies besides that that are excluded?
Yeah, well, the, the twelve million, one fifty-six, two eighty-three includes four components. There's two components of debt, there's one which is the operating budget, and then there's also the regional transportation, which was listed at the five hundred and thirty thousand, seven eighty-one. So when we reduce that five thirty-seven eighty-one to the two eighty-four, eight twenty-seven, that difference of the two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars comes off the top. So that's, that's the difference between the twelve, one fifty-six, two eighty-three, and the eleven-nine, ten, three twenty-nine, just the total kind of piece put together.
Then I would like to ask Mr. Baker, since he's the finance person-
Well, could, could, I just need to ask for clarification. What we're actually discussing now is potentially the amendment-
Well, that's what I'm asking.
-that we just passed-
Right.
-which has actually been voted on and passed.
So what I'm asking at this point then-
I'm just, okay.
Can the finance person from the region actually say, is the eleven million, nine hundred going to be sufficient? He does our numbers.
The process, as it's outlined, based upon what the actual level from the state is, is sufficient to fund the budget as it was appropriated. Basically, there's a number of different estimates on transportation reimbursement, but the second town meeting process will make the budget whole depending on what the reimbursement turns out to be.
Okay. I, again, we, we have an amended motion that has a new total. We voted that new total in the amendment. So barring a further discussion on the final article, is there any, anything having to do with passing the final article? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. If you are in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed, please raise your cards. I see none. I deem the vote passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for Article Seven?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars for the payment of vocational education tuitions and relative transportations for students enrolled in vocational educational programs other than at Old Colony Vocational School.
Thank you. Is there a second? Just reminded me, David, were you on the football team when we were here? I don't remember. You ran pretty good there.
Track team, thank you. Yes, I still have the grace.
Would you like to speak to this article?
This is tuitions for students who attend, I believe, we have some students at Bristol Aggie, Norfolk Aggie, programs that aren't offered at Old Colony.
Thank you. Does FinCom have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the FinCom does recommend approving this article.
Is there anyone else would wish to speak to this article? Seeing none rising, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article Seven, please raise your cards. I see none. I deem the vote passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for Article Eight?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to cover the cost of contractual obligations upon retirement of town employees.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Would you care to speak to the article?
This article is to cover any contractual obligations. If a town employee retires, there's any accrued vacation time and eligible sick leave buyback, that would be covered by these funds which are set aside for this purpose.
Thank you. And if you could pass the written motion down. Does the FinCom have a recommendation?
FinCom does recommend approving this article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the article? Seeing no one rising to the microphones, all those in favor, this requires a majority vote, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to this article, please raise your cards. Seeing none, I deem it passes by unanimous. Do I have a motion for Article Nine?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of adding to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, Gatsby forty-five, pursuant to the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-two B, Section Twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to the article?
I guess it's simply our contribution to the trust fund, and year-to-date, there's a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars in that trust fund. This year, we're adding fifty thousand dollars to it.
Thank you. Does FinCom have a recommendation?
FinCom does recommend approving this article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I see no one rising. All those in favor, this requires a majority vote, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards. Thank you. I deem the vote passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for Article Ten?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand dollars to cover the cost of hiring a consultant to perform an actuarial evaluation for the other post-employment benefits for Gatsby forty-five.
Would you care to speak to it?
The town is required to have an actuarially done every three years. Our update is due this year. Thank you.
And does the FinCom have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, FinCom recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Anyone else caring to speak to it? I see no one rising. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed, please raise your cards. I see none. I declare it passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for Article Eleven?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate, appropriate six thousand dollars to cover the cost of continuing disclosure for bonded debt service.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to it?
I, I, I don't have any notes that I can read from on this one, but I would guess that we're trying to appropriate six thousand dollars to cost the, cover the cost of continuing disclosure for bonded debt service.
Thank you.
It's a requirement.
That's all that.
I went off script there, I'm sorry.
And does the FinCom have any recommendation for us?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we do recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no one rising, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see none. I declare the vote passes unanimously. I entertain a motion for Article Twelve.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Paul Malidi from the Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen recertification of values as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And could you speak to the article, Mr. Malidi?
Of course. As you know, every number of years, we have to recertify all the properties in town. We, we break that up into a number of years. That's what this total is, is in this article.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone else caring to speak to this article? Seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Twelve, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed, please raise your cards. Seeing none, I declare the vote passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion for Article Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the debt service slash capital project stabilization fund, the sum of seventy-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars for the purpose of leasing and/or purchasing for a term of three years, equipment, technology, and technology for the town network.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Would you care to speak to the motion?
Did these get handed out with the- Fiscal Year Fifteen? Five capital- Five capital plan that was handed out to the voters with the annual town warrant. Total approved by selectmen in the Finance Committee was seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. The funding was laid out as follows. Three-year lease for equipment and technology, two hundred fifteen thousand dollars, free cash of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred, short-term borrowing for the ambulance, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, short-term borrowing for the equipment and technology, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, for a total of seven hundred sixty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. This motion is for the first year of the lease of seventy-one thousand dollars, seventy-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars. The fiscal year sixteen lease payment will be the same, seventy-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars. And the fiscal year seventeen lease payment will be seventy-one thousand, six hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, for a total of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee does recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak to the article? Seeing none. This does require a two-thirds vote. I'm going to ask the tellers just to make sure that we get a two-thirds counted, if you can count this vote. All those in favor of Article Thirteen, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put your cards down. Any opposed to this article, please raise your cards. Thank you. The vote carries, the two-thirds major, uh, two-thirds, and passes. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion for Article Fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate five hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars to pay costs of capital improvements and equipments, equipment as follows. Equipment and technology for town network, which, including police laptops, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, ambulance with equipment for fire department, less trade-in, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, simulcast radio system for fire department with a five percent grant match of sixteen thousand dollars, voting booths for a total of eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, copiers for the assessors in the treasure and collector's office, ten thousand dollars, Ted Williams Camp roadway, roadway repairs in front of Loon Pond Lodge, twenty thousand dollars, flail roadway edge mower for the highway department, four thousand, seven hundred dollars, salt bin shelter for the highway department, six thousand, eight hundred dollars, roof replacement on maintenance building at transfer station, twenty thousand dollars, two new police cruisers with equipment, less trade-ins, fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, new pickup truck for police department, less insurance reimbursement of twelve thousand dollars, and portable radios for the police department, fifteen thousand dollars, again, for a total of five hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars to pay costs of equipment and technology for the town network, including the police laptops, and for purchasing and equip, and equipping an ambulance for the use of the fire department, included in items one and two above, including the payment of all costs incidental and related to, under, and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seventy-two, seven, paragraph twenty-eight, and Section Seven, Paragraph Nine of General Laws, or any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And a hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars shall be transferred from the free cash to be allocated amongst the remaining items three through twelve above, and further authorize the board of selectmen to enter into agreements and take any other actions necessary to effectuate that, the purpose of this vote.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And do you have a quick synopsis that you could speak to this article?
It just, it authorizes the borrowing and the transfer from free cash for the balance to capital projects that were approved by the capital expenditures committee and the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Does the FinCom have a recommendation?
Yes, we still recommend approving this article.
Thank you. This does require a two-thirds vote. Again, just to make sure, I'll ask the tellers to count this. All those in favor of Article Fourteen, please raise your cards. Thank you. Put your cards down. All those opposed to this article, please raise your cards. Thank you. The vote passes by a two-thirds majority. I'd entertain a motion for Article Fifteen.
I move that the town vote to appropriate four hundred thousand dollars to pay the cost of constructing roadway improvements to access areas already developed for outdoor recreation, completion of two multi-use athletic fields, soccer, football, and lacrosse, and to redesign and make improvements to the previous existing nature trail, all on the town's property located at Ted Williams Camp, Map Twenty-seven, Block Two, Lot Twenty-eight, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, which, which property is managed and supervised by the Park Commission of the Town of Lakeville for public playground and recreation center purposes, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-five, Section Fourteen, and other laws relating to playgrounds and recreation, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, Twenty-five of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore provided, however, that such funds shall not be borrowed or expanded unless the town is approved for a parkland acquisition and renovations for communities grants from the Mass. Division of Conservation Services. For reimbursement of all or a percentage of the project cost, that the town administrator with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to file on behalf of the town any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursement from any federal, state, or other funds, and to enter into such grant agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary to accomplish the foregoing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And could you speak to the article?
Basically, what this is, is a grant for the Park Commission to complete the road project going into Ted Williams Camp from Presson Street to Beckett Street, and to finish the ball fields. It's all contingent on a grant. If we don't get the grant, we don't get the four hundred thousand. So it's a sixty-forty grant. Our share is a hundred and sixty thousand if we get it.
Thank you. Does the FinCom have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the FinCom does recommend approving.
Is there anyone who would like to speak further on this article? Seeing no one rising, this is two-thirds. I would ask the tellers to count this vote for the record. All those in favor of Article Fifteen, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. Vote passes by the two-thirds required. Entertain a motion for Article Sixteen.
I move the town vote to accept under the provisions of General Laws, Chapter Ninety, Section Thirty-four, an apportionment in the amount of three hundred seventy-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars, or any other sum that may be allocated to the town under Chapter Ninety program.
Second.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to it?
This is, this is simply what Mr. Moxon's thieves from the Massachusetts State House have allocated to the Town of Lakeville. So it's simply an acceptance of the money that we can use towards road repair, which Jeremy Peck has a program to repair certain roads under town and expend these funds. So it's money from the state. Thank you.
And does the FinCom have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, this is always one of our favorites. We recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this article? Yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, several years ago, when this article came up, one of my neighbors asked if and when Rush Pond Road might be considered. At the time, the response from the Highway Department was that we don't have enough money to do primary roads, much less secondary roads. And I'm just wondering if there's been any chance that-
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Yes.
It's irrelevant to the article.
Thank you. I think the point of order is that this motion is to accept money from the state. So I appreciate the questions. I would recommend a selectman's meeting. Thanks. Anyone further wish to discuss this? Seeing none, requires a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed? Opposed? I declare it passes by majority vote. I would entertain a motion for Article Seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of adding to the stabilization fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to it?
We did touch on this a little bit, I think, earlier with regard to the transportation for the school budget. The original transfer was a hundred thousand. And we, selectmen in the Finance Committee voted to transfer two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for regional transportation, the balance of thirty-five is in anticipation of setting the contract, settling the contracts with the fire union, the laborers' union. Really that about sums it up.
Thank you. And for the record, the FinCom recommendation?
The FinCom did recommend approving, approving this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? I see no one rising. This does require two-thirds, but given the last few votes, I'm going to go ahead and try to determine the two-thirds vote by my eye. So if you are in favor of Article Seventeen, please raise your cards. Thank you. Please put them down. Any opposed to Article Seventeen? I see none. I declare it passes unanimously. Motion for Article Eighteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of adding to the debt service slash capital project stabilization fund pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Five B.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. And could you speak to the motion?
It's just, putting aside, or earmark is the wrong word, but appropriating funds for, just as it says, future debt service, capital projects, kind of likening it maybe to a savings account, you would, for purchasing items that we need from a capital standpoint.
Thank you. And for the record, the FinCom recommendation?
The FinCom does recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion for this article? Seeing no one rising, again, it requires a two-thirds vote, but I will attempt to judge that by eye. With all those in favor of the article, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I see none. I deem that the article passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion for Article Nineteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate one hundred thousand dollars to the reserve fund.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
And could you speak to the article?
Briefly, it's, just as it implies, a reserve fund for unforeseen expenses that we can, on approval of the Finance Committee, allocate to covering expenses that weren't in the budget originally.
And for the record, the Finance Committee-
Yes, the Finance Committee does recommend approving.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no one rising, this requires a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Put them down. You may put them down. All those opposed to the article, please raise your cards. I see none. I deem that it passes unanimously. I'd entertain a motion for Article Twenty.
Good evening. Bob Palucci, Board of Health. I move that the town vote to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Thank you. And could you just do a quick synopsis of-
What this relates to is the town has money available through the Board of Health to help any residents if they have a failed septic system. They don't have the money to repair it. Conventionally, they can come to us. We're fully funded. We don't need any more money appropriated at- any more money appropriated at this time. So, we ask to continue the program, but we just don't need any more money right now.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval, Mr. Moderator.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, requires a majority. All those in favor of the article, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to the article, please raise your cards. I see none. I deem the vote passes unanimous. I would entertain a motion for Article 21.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 2, Section 6 of the town's general bylaws by lowering the town meeting quorum from 100 to 50, or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you like to speak to that?
Sure. The current general bylaw reads as follows. Section 6, the number of voters necessary to constitute a quorum at any town meeting shall be 100, provided, however, that a number less than a quorum may adjourn the same. Historically, at least within the last, oh, five years or so, including tonight, we've waited and waited and waited for a quorum. Eventually, we get one. But, in the interest of ensuring we get one, we thought we'd put this out there for you folks to decide. Changing from 100 to 50 certainly isn't statistically relevant. It's still a very, very tiny fraction of the 7,100-plus people that can vote in town. But, in the interest of getting things a little bit more efficiently, the process to be a little bit more efficient, we thought this might move things in that direction. I personally had recommended 10, because I thought that would really wake people up, and out of fear, maybe we'd get a full house every time. But, we opted with 50. So, thanks.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee does recommend approving this article.
And further discussion?
Well, 10 was the number of the quorum required for Salomon Gamara. I don't think that's appropriate for this town. I'm troubled by this proposal. I'd rather wait and get a quorum of a reasonable, of a more reasonable number than allow 50 people to conduct the business of the town. And, as you well know, I come to most town meetings. So, I recommend that we don't approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir over there?
Frank Starek, Crest Drive. And, Mr. Moderator, through you, the Selectman Burke, I take issue with this statement that it's statistically insignificant. Anytime you reduce a vote to 50 people on a close vote, it comes down to three people statistically, okay? Three people swing the vote. So, you get your Uncle Louis and your two sister-in-laws, and bingo, you swing it your way. This is the most dangerous thing that's ever been introduced to the town. It's times have changed. It's 2014, and our town and town meetings, you know, when there was only black and white TV, and the Ed Sullivan Show went off, and people were bored to death, you know, town meeting was a big deal, and you could make it. Now, with the economy, everybody works. It's very hard to make it. You've got children. If I had, you know, parents of young children, I don't know how I could stay here, you know, real late. To knock down to 50 people is just the most dangerous thing that's ever been proposed here. Statistically, it's just not right. Maybe we need to start voting through, sending out things with our tax bills or something, or, you know, electronically online. But, to take away the underlying principle, which is to get the town people involved, I understand that your numbers are down. I understand that it's hard to do that, okay? But, that's the price of admission if we want a town meeting to stay here. And I would recommend that you strongly vote against this one.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
James Richati. I disagree with going to 50. I'd agree to go into 200, but I agree to keep it. The thing is, you just need, because I pointed out, when I ask my neighbors about the town meetings, they don't know whether it's over or whatever. So, you need to get, you have to, I'll put it up to the selectmen to get, figure out a way to get the message to the people, because most of them don't know. And I'm not going to go why they don't know. I mean, a lot of them, like you pointed out, they work, they have kids. But, I think there would be a way. I think Aaron had a way to get into, send out messages about what people think. Well, let's send something like that out before the town meeting to everybody. It might cost a few dollars, but I think you might get more people here. But, definitely keep it at 100.
Thank you.
I agree with this fellow. It just boggles my mind that we are increasing in population, yet we're suggesting less participation by the citizens. Democracy means getting involved, and we should do everything we can to get the message out that these meetings are extremely important, and people should come out to voice their opinion. And, I think we narrowed the scope of democracy when we narrowed the scope of votes, and we accept, we accept a situation simply because it's inconvenient. I don't think that's the way to go. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dave Fierzke. I agree with all the folks thus far. I think if you don't come to vote, you give up your ability to complain about the vote. At least, if I come here to vote, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, I feel I have a right to complain, because I express my opinion. But, we should not reduce the number, otherwise, we could just have the selectmen vote for us. No, don't reduce the number.
Thank you. I think that covers the opposition. Is there anyone for this article that would care to speak, besides those that already have? I see no one else rising.
Could I briefly comment? I'd just like to thank everybody that got up and spoke. I mean, I think for me, putting this forward was to hear what people had to say. I mean, I think that the issue of convenience, yeah, is it convenient to come to town meeting? No. It's certainly not dangerous. It doesn't lessen the number of people we can let in the door. And, a lot of towns have 50, or even less as a quorum. And I think that my goal was to put it as low as we could, so that people would be aware, so that all of you would go and say, "You've got to get involved, townspeople, because a few of you can make all the decisions for the town." And, my real goal is to have this conversation at town meeting for the sake of it getting on cable, and everybody getting a little bit of fear in their heart on this issue, and try to talk up town meeting, and try to get people involved. And if it passes, great. And if it doesn't, that's fine, too. Thanks, though, for participating.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one else rising, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the article, please raise your cards. Not aware of the ruling that would require that. We don't follow Robert's rules. We go by the town meeting time. All right, thank you. We will continue with the vote. All those opposed to the article, please raise your cards. Thank you. I declare the vote fails by a majority. I would entertain a motion for Article 22. All right, thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the motion? Could we have a microphone down here, actually? Sorry, interrupt you. We'll go freestyle here for a second. Nope, we won't.
Our present town clerk fees have been in effect since August of 1985, almost 30 years ago. Due to the ever-increasing costs of materials and supplies, the town clerk fees should be increased to substantiate the costs.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee does recommend approving this article.
Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing no one rising, this vote requires a majority. All those in favor of the Article 22, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article 22, please raise your cards. I see one, two. I declare it passes by majority vote. I would entertain a motion for Article 23.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws to regulate registered marijuana dispensaries as shown in Article 23 of the warrant. Amend Section 2 definitions by adding the following definition in alphabetical order. Registered marijuana dispensary, a medical marijuana treatment center as defined in 105 CMR 725.004 and regulated in 105 CMR 725.100. Two, amend Section 4.1, table of use regulations by adding a new line under Section 4.1.3, industrial uses as shown below for the new use category, registered marijuana, registered medical marijuana dispensary, to be allowed by special permit in the industrial district and to be prohibited in all other districts. Industrial uses, registered marijuana dispensary as defined by Mass. General Law, in residential, no; in business, no; in industrial, special permit; in industrial B, no. Amend Section 7.4.6 by adding the following use alphabetically among the uses allowed by special permit. Registered marijuana dispensary, the special permit granting authority is the Board of Appeals in the industrial district. Subject to site plan review by the planning board and to approve, and to approval by the Board of Health and conforming to applicable general laws, site plan shall be incorporated into the special permit by reference.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And could you speak to the motion?
Yes, we had a hearing on this. It's to incorporate the Mass. General Laws into our zoning bylaws, and to put the, and to put the dispensary, as I said, marijuana in the industrial zone, so we don't have any residential, industrial, B, or business.
And what is the planning board's recommendation?
We recommend it approval.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
I believe we recommend the approval as well.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Frank Starek, Crest Drive. I'm in favor of this. This is a good move by the planning board to regulate this. I'm a little put off, and I may need help, Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Council, on the word "registered." And the reason it bothers me a little bit is, I've recently been to marijuana to visit my daughter, and they have legalized possession of marijuana. If we keep the word "registered" in here, it implies that the government will always have control over who can sell marijuana, and this is medical, too. I'm not opposed to this by any means. I just want to know if we should have a broader, bigger lasso to rope in regulating all forms of marijuana sales in this town. Just a thought.
Is there anything you can respond to with that, as far as it being called "registered"?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, so, the term "registered marijuana dispensary" is the term that's used in the Massachusetts general laws and the regulations to refer to a specific type of facility. So, by tying your bylaw into the definitions employed in the state law, you're saying that we're going to allow this certain type of facility in this area, under general zoning principles. If some new type of marijuana dispensary were to come into existence, that would not be allowed under this existing definition, because this existing definition has a specific meaning under Massachusetts law.
Anyone else with any discussion? Seeing no one else, I had to make sure he was going for the camera there. Seeing no one else rising, I'm going to, this does require a two-thirds majority. I'm going to ask the tellers to count this, just to make sure we have the record. So, all those in favor of Article 23, please raise your cards. Thank you. Please put your cards down. Any opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. I declare the vote does pass by the required two-thirds. I would entertain a motion for Article 25, or 24. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yes. Article 24, I move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws by deleting in its entirety Section 7.9, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers.
Is there a second? Thank you. If you could speak to the article?
Yes. This will just eliminate the verbiage in our zoning bylaws of how we dealt with the medical marijuana issued before the second one voted in.
And does the planning board have a recommendation?
Yes, most certainly. Unanimous.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does recommend approving.
Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing no one rising, again, this does require two-thirds. I will try to do this by eye, based on the last vote. So, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I see one. I declare it, motion passes by the two-thirds majority. Do I need to vote? All right. With that one, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask the tellers to come back, and we're going to count this vote. Tellers, if you would, we'll do it again for the count. For the record, the Attorney General likes an actual number. All those in favor of Article 24, please raise your cards. Thank you. Put your cards down. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. I declare it passes by a vote of eighty-seven to two, meeting the two-thirds majority. Thank you. Motion for Article twenty-five?
I move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning map as identified in Section three point two point one of the town's zoning bylaws by changing the zoning from residential to business of the following parcels identified below by assessors' map and parcel number comprising approximately twenty-three point eight seven acres of land abutting Bedford Street to the west, beginning from the Middle Borough Town Line and running south to Taunton Street as shown as lots numbered one through six on a map showing the affected parcels on file with the town clerk. Now, I'm going to read the, the numbers for the parcels, but there's an additional parcel that's on there, so there's actually seven. It's just not on the map. The numbers one, zero two four dash zero zero eight dash zero zero one, which is two Bedford Street, zero two four dash zero zero eight dash zero zero two, which is four Bedford Street, zero two four dash zero zero eight dash zero zero three, which is twelve Bedford Street, zero two four dash zero zero eight dash zero zero four, which is fourteen Bedford Street, zero two four dash zero zero eight dash zero zero five, which is eight Taunton Street, zero two four dash zero zero four dash zero zero eight, which is twenty-three Taunton Street, and zero two four dash zero zero four dash zero zero eight A, which is twenty-five Taunton Street.
Thank you. Is there a second? And again, if you could speak to this article?
Yes, sir. We were asked by the Master Plan Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee through several, several, I think several different courses of Master Plan Committee, they've been saying through a poll that they've taken through town, different places, they would take polls, and they determined that the townspeople wanted more business opportunity areas or zoning along Bedford Street. And they brought this to us and we held a hearing. We thought it through pretty well and it seemed natural to us to bring it before town meeting, so we agreed to do that. We, I think we were unanimous on this too, but we voted to approve it.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Is there any further discussion for this article?
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, yes. You're on.
Don Foster with the zoning board. I'm going to ask Mr., through you, ask the planning board where lot number seven is on this map?
If you could point that out?
Lot seven borders the pink-colored lots and it is a chunk of lot six that was cut out by the people who owned the lot, so it actually was cut out before we took.
So, so just so I understand, lot seven is the triangular piece that is?
It's part of six.
It's part of six. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator Frank Staret, through you to the selectmen, will this move help or lower any residential taxes in the town of Lakeville?
Selectmen, you have?
I believe it's probably a better question for the assessors, but as far as the fact that we don't have differences in the residential versus commercial tax rate at this point in time, you know, I can't foresee that that would be a change.
I'll take that as a, it won't. You know, when my ice cream starts to melt in my freezer at home, I, we do a needs assessment and there's something wrong here, but we need a new refrigerator. Has a needs assessment, Mr. Moderator, through you to the selectmen again, has a needs assessment been done here? I know there was a recommendation from the Master Planning Committee which was supposed to be revisited, I think, if you check with Rita, a couple of years back, they said to revisit all of these things. And has there been a needs assessment done here? And the reason I ask that is I believe a member of the planning board did a survey of this within the past year and there are thirty unoccupied business properties in Lakeville already, so has there been a needs assessment done here?
I really think that, this microphone's a lot less powerful. In terms of the needs assessment, I think I defer to the planning board. I mean, they, they in implementing the master plan, I think, had gone through a process. They had a public hearing and they recommended that this move forward. I don't know as if it's the purview of the Board of Selectmen per se to do that analysis, so I would defer to their recommendation based on, on the fact that they're the planning authority for the town.
Yeah, the one thing that, that...
No, 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 I mean, you can, you can add more if you like.
Will Armus allow the law?
Actually, if I can hold people off, you ask me when or if you should speak, to be clear. Thank you. You've asked if there was a needs assessment, you asked Board of Selectmen, they've said no. I'm going to move on to the next person. If you have further questions, please ask him. Mr. Palucci?
Yes, I support this. A couple of things, the report he is suggesting to showed was very, very inaccurate. One of the most inaccurate things I've ever seen presented in a town forum. It had Lakeville Country Club, the pit down on one oh five and eighteen. They're all properties that are paying taxes. Maybe they're not run to the level or the way that some people feel they should be run to. You know, a couple were empty offices that were currently under rent that are rented now. You're always going to have vacant units for rent. So that whole report shouldn't even be mentioned to. I mean, it was ridiculous. And then the second thing is when you talk about the cost to the town, everybody talks about the tax rate. The tax rate's the same. But if you take ten houses off the tax rolls, average even two kids a house, you just took twenty kids out of the school system. That's almost a class, so you are going to see a benefit over the long haul. Imagine if you took a hundred houses off, you'd still get the same taxes and now you'd have two hundred less kids in the school system. So that's our biggest expense in the town is the school. So alone, proportionally, whether it's five or eight houses now or a hundred at the end of the day, and then just my last point is that there is a need for business in the town. There's many people in business community. They don't want to go into an old and renovate a little property. They want to build their own building, they want to set it up the way they want. You know, most businesses nowadays, there's a lot of permits you got to go through, whether it's medical, dental, or whatever. Just renovating or trying to move in or rent doesn't work. And we really need to open up some places in town so this community can get moving. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nelson Pratt, I, I always look at rezoning opportunities as a risk-reward kind of situation and not to, not to belabor the point about why this came forward, but my understanding was not necessarily by any survey that the town did, that it was done a couple of years ago. In fact, this is probably the second bite at this apple, albeit a much smaller bite than last year. And the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I was under the impression, was doing this as an effort to generate tax revenue for the town, not for services or any of those kinds of things. If this was strictly done as an opportunity to generate more tax revenue. Having said that, I guess I would ask, in following up on Frank's comment about a needs assessment, has anyone looked at the opportunity and what kind of tax revenue could come from rezoning these properties as they are today, residential versus what they might be as business? Is there a number that somebody can tag on to?
Right. I did want to get back to that needs question, so glad you brought it up. Could the planning board, or is there a member of the Master Plan Committee that may be present that could speak to if that's the, what started the, the thing going? Go ahead.
I would like to defer to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Master Plan Study Committee, the Master Plan Committee that put it all together as far as what the needs assessment might be. However, people should look at the properties down Bedford Street and see that there are businesses right now mixed in among dwellings. Some of them are undersized, some of them are where they have to provide a well. It prohibits a lot of residential use in that area because they have a well, they have to have a septic system, so on and so forth. That's some of the things that we look at. We look at the more, you know, technical, professional things. We don't get into what taxes are going to be different, what people's feelings are going to get hurt or anything like that. We can't do that. It's not our job. But you could ask the Master Plan Committee.
Is there anyone here from the Master Plan Committee or that could speak on any of these issues? Yes?
Mr. Moderator, I am on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but a needs assessment was never done.
I'm going to ask over here, I guess, next, and then we'll come back to you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to make the observation that the land for which zoning change is proposed is down towards the Rotary and Ocean Spray, it's close to good transportation, and it would be a good location for the use that's proposed. And I don't think anybody's brought up any objection that, that has any traction, any reason why we shouldn't zone this to, to business.
Okay.
And I don't, I think therefore that, that we ought to do it.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Maybe I could take a shot at that one. If you look at the size of these properties, I, I think we can all agree that the A-frame needs some work and the next article we'll be voting on will be sort of to clean up the, the business park. And I think the A-frame sort of, sort of goes in line with that. It's obviously improperly zoned. But when you look at the other properties that are part of this article, they're very, very small. And I was at a public hearing with the planning board and I asked them to, you know, could they envision what might go on these properties? And obviously, nobody could because we don't know. But the point is they're very, very shallow and they're very small. They're going to have to be combined with each other in some way, shape, or form for anything to go here, in my opinion, because of the size. That lends itself to, my opinion, the kind of development on Bedford Street, which we already have and many of us don't really care for. And I, I, I look at the, maybe the two most recent examples of business properties on Bedford Street and I can't help but look at the Tire Depot as a very attractive business property in town of Lakeville. And if you just look across the street from that, you have RVs parked with a white plastic fence around them. This is not the kind of economic development and business development I think we should be, we should be pushing for in town. I think, I think these properties are zone residential. To my knowledge, they were bought, nothing happened around them to necessitate a change that these people are disadvantaged because they were residential, now they need to be business. There's going to be a creep factor to this that's going to happen. What's going to happen here is if this is approved, you're going to see further articles like this proposed as you go south on Route, on Bedford Street. And we're going to be right back to where we were ultimately last year when this was defeated, that there are a lot of small, undersized properties that are going to create no tax revenue, more than they create today, and are going, are going to be a blight on the town.
All right, thank you. Over here.
Yeah, Richard Bosmer, Lakeville. I agree with the speaker two before me, that these are the lots that make sense for this zoning change. Also, I would like to point out to the townspeople that a lot of these lots are, are businesses that are running, that are not zoned correctly. Okay? So it would just be general housekeeping. That's the way I see it. Especially down in this, this lot seventeen, twelve, all down that area, they're all, they're all businesses that are existing. Okay? And like I say, I, it'll give the, the town a chance to monitor these businesses a little better than they can now. Okay? And please also remember, you know, I spoke about it last year at the town meeting, you know, the A-frame, they were good people in business, they couldn't even get a, a permit for AC. And we essentially drove them out of business. Okay? I mean, that's an area that makes sense, that we should have a restaurant.
Thank you. Yes?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Moderator, weren't we talking about parcels one through six on the map, which is really one through seven?
Yes.
And not, and not the other parcels that were just referred to? Just, just to pick up on what the previous, previous speaker said, lot six, which is now lot six and seven, are much larger. And I just point that out for, you know, people's observation, which is probably obvious, but that's what I say sometimes. It, it just seems to me that that particular lot is overlooking a waterway of sorts and I could, I could envision a business use that might be useful there. And if I had to do it over again, I would have, you know, had lot six and seven not wrapped in with one through five because of their geometry.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Michelle Byrd and I live on one thirty-two Rhode Island Road. And last year, we did have that as part of that grouping. That area is very, very busy. There's big truck, trailer trucks going by there, there's business, there's always business going through there. And I just think it should be approved because the, being, living there, it's very difficult. It's very noisy. That's all.
Yes, sir.
Jane Bucchetti. One unknown factor that we have to keep in mind, probably won't affect me, is the future. When the Rotary gets developed, there's going to be a different issue there. Right now, if you think about it, if you, going during rush hour, when you go on Bedford Street to the Rotary, the Middle Borough has to have a policeman there just to let the people out of one business there. So again, if you know what, what happens on Route forty-four, it's murder getting in and out of that, those places. So if, again, not knowing how the Rotary will be developed, that's the unknown, so we can't go by the unknown. But I just know if you had another, there ain't that much room there, but if you had something big like that and you had more things, I don't know how that exchanged, but I call that the unknown. That's it.
All right, thank you. Do you have something new to offer?
Last comment, okay? Route eighteen is, is one of the major entry points for the town of Lakeville. And the issue I have, my last issue, is aesthetics. Right now, I think if you look at this map, two, three, four, five are all housed lots, right? Paying taxes and everything. And we, the vote here is to change them from residential over to business, okay? I just think if we're a semi-rural town and you go on the, the Lakeville website and you play the video and you see the lovely and talented Ms. Garbit in her video, you know, and we show the trees, we show the ponds and everything. know, and we show the trees, we show the ponds and everything, as you develop business after business after business next to each other, two, three, four, five, six, and then there's going to be a move in the future, I'm sure, to push it down, you know, all the way down towards Seventy-Nine and towards Savis, you end up at the Route Forty Four, and I'm just scared to death of that.
So that's just, in fact, it's two things. The people that lived, that live at these lots, that, that, that own these lots, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, or six, seven, that's a single owner, asked to have this changed. They aren't, they aren't talking about what's happening to somebody else's property someplace else. None of the people who are speaking against this are butters. The third point is, there's a waterline underneath there that makes this valuable property for places like restaurants and medical places that, that aren't allowed to use wells. We have very few waterlines in Lakeville, and this is one of the, this is one of the few places where you have an opportunity to do something. And it's already, what happens with towns, as they grow, the main drags get more and more busy, and they become less desirable for residential, and they become more desirable for business. It's a simple, natural, growing thing, and there's nothing cancerous or weird about it. It's just, it's just the way a town grows. The main drag is going to get more traffic, and is going to get more business.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Dave Pierschek again. The water access is something that I wanted to bring up. Fortunately, he did. And I've been in this town for fifty years, and quite frankly, I'm rural residential to death. You know, I mean, I've heard that coming out my ears. We've got no businesses. You want to go out to a restaurant, you want to go get gas, you want to do anything, you've got to go elsewhere. That's fine, I suppose, if, if you want to live in a postcard. We have a postcard. We have a beautiful town. I don't think that businesses, some people seem to be anti-business of any type. It's not what type of business might go there. We don't want business. We don't want traffic. The people who are living there would like to have some business buy their property. The people who are outside don't want that to happen because their town will be less rural and residential and beautiful and whatever. I'm in favor of the.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm getting a little tired of hearing Route Forty Four be used to eighty-six any development in this town. I think the only objection I heard that, that made any sense to me was this, you know, the, the allusion to the small size of the lots. But they're all together, they can be aggregated. And a, a nice restaurant, or something similar, can be located there. It's ideally situated, and we ought to approve this.
Okay. Mr. Foster?
Mr. Moderator, Don Foster of the zoning board. I, and I'm not speaking for the zoning board, I'm speaking for myself. Mr. Sterrett suggested a needs assessment. I'd like to suggest that we consider that seriously. A few years ago, the zoning board had a petition from one of the properties, one of the pinck properties on the map, a property already zoned business that had a house on it used for business. The owner wanted the house converted back into a residence. So while we're talking about all the needs of business up here, we actually converted an existing business back to a residence on an existing business zoned property. Not long ago, on a different, you know, different part of town that's zoned business, we had several lots that we approved homes on. So we have examples of both needs in town. Some people want businesses, some people want homes on properties that are zoned business. I'm not suggesting that we say no to this, but I am suggesting that I think it needs further study, a needs assessment, as Mr. Sterrett suggested. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is anyone else caring to speak to it? I don't see anyone rising. This will require two-thirds vote, so we'll go ahead and ask the tellers to count this vote. All those in favor of Article Twenty-Five, please raise your cards. Is that forty-one? Thank you. Please put your cards down. All those opposed to the article, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put your cards down. A two-thirds vote would require fifty-seven votes in the affirmative. We had seventy votes in the affirmative, fifteen opposed. I declare this motion passes by the two-thirds majority. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for Article Twenty-Six.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning map as identified in Section Three Point Two Point One of the town's zoning bylaws by changing the zoning from residential to business of the following parcels identified below by assessors' map and parcel number comprising approximately sixteen point six-six acres of land off Bedford Street and known collectively as Lakeville Business Park, as shown as lots numbered eleven through seventeen on a map showing the affected parcels on file with the town clerk. And they are lots zero-two-four dash zero-zero-five dash zero-zero-five-two, Lakeville Business Park. Zero-two-five dash zero-zero-three dash zero-zero-four, One Lakeville Business Park. Zero-two-five dash zero-zero-three dash zero-zero-eight-B, Lakeville Business Park. Zero-two-five dash zero-zero-three dash zero-zero-two-H, Nine Lakeville Business Park. Zero-two-four dash zero-zero-five dash zero-zero-eight-A, Eight Business Park. Zero-two-four dash zero-zero-five dash zero-zero-seven, Six Lakeville Business Park. Zero-two-four dash zero-zero-five dash zero-zero-six, Four Lakeville Business Park.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And if you could, speak to this motion.
Yes, this is more or less what they call a housekeeping article. I believe it was voted on at a previous town meeting. It just never was followed through. It was never recorded. We had a, a meeting on this. They're all businesses. It's in a business subdivision. And I believe it just went right through. Everyone agrees that a business park should be in business zone.
And does the planning board have a recommendation?
Yes, sir. We unanimously voted.
All right, thank you. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee does agree that the business park ought to be zoned business. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Martin Gresmullen Hill Drive, also part owner of Two Lakeville Business Park. Just a question on page ten, when they list the owners, there's an error in the name of that property, listing my first name, not my last name. Would that in any way affect the validity of this vote?
No, that's not part of the actual motion. It's information provided.
Great, thank you.
Slight errors we'll overlook. Thank you. Yes?
I just wanted to check. Did anybody just talk to the businesses down there to make sure business conformed with the use that they're currently using? I believe this A warehouse right now at the end of the road, one of the parcels we're talking about rezoning that would probably have to be industrial. And I just didn't know if all the people on the road were notified of any of the meetings that they were talking about changing this over to, so they had an opportunity to not have it changed, or have that included in it.
We're, could I ask the planning board, I think first, if, if there was notification of the zoning change to the owners in any form?
No, there was no notification. We just went, again, it was a Lakeville Master Plan. And I believe this industri, I don't have the little map with me, but I believe it's industrial behind there, isn't it? I believe this, because there's the old Cameron Ashley there.
Yeah.
So I think that could be developed and incorporated into that parcel. But as, for the time being, we, we wanted to rezon it all business because it was basically business. If they needed something in addition, we'd gladly entertain that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else caring to speak to this? I don't see anyone rising. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote, so I'll ask the tellers to please count. All those in favor of Article Twenty-Six, please raise your cards. Forty-nine? Thank you. Please, please lower your cards. All those opposed to Article Twenty-Six, please raise your cards. Thank you. I declare that the motion passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion for Article Twenty-Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section Eleven Point Zero, land-based wind energy facilities, as shown in Article Twenty-Seven of the warrant. Section Eleven Point Zero Point B, applicability, delete the last paragraph regarding offshore and private residential power systems. Section Eleven Point Zero Point C, definitions, delete "as of right" citing and insert "after site plan review authority." The following special permit requirements, development of all land-based wind energy facilities, except those within the definition of renewable and alternative energy research and development facilities, in Section Two Point Zero of this bylaw, shall require the issuance of special permit and shall meet all requirements for site plan approval under Section Six Point Seven and Section Eleven Point Zero Point E. Point Two, the special permit granting authority for land-based wind energy facilities shall be the planning board. Section Eleven Point Zero Point J. Point Two, design standards, lighting, delete the word "reasonability." In Section Four Point Zero, use regulations, Four Point One Point Three, industrial uses, add land-based wind energy facilities and in residential zone or not permitted in residential zone, not permitted in B zoning districts, and special permit in industrial and industrial B zoning districts.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind speaking to this motion?
Yes, we just want to make sure the town has the ability, the ability to regulate their, the wind generating plants that may arise. There have been some in, in various towns that have developed problems. And we just want to make sure that we don't allow them as of right and allow people to come in and develop something just because they think they can. We want to make sure we can head off any problems.
Thank you. And the planning board, recommendation?
Yes, sir. Unanimous.
Thank you. Fin, finance committee, what is your recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion? I see no one rising. I will ask the tellers, given that this is a two-thirds vote, if you would do the count. All those in favor of Article Twenty-Seven, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put your cards down. All those opposed to Article Twenty-Seven, please raise your cards. I declare the vote passes by the required two-thirds. Could I entertain a motion for Article Twenty-Eight, the final article?
Yes, sir. I move that the town vote to accept Springbrook Lane as a town way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, an easement or fee simple in the way, and any way related easements, as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Collins Engineering Company Incorporated on file with the town clerk entitled "Springbrook Lane: Layout and Asbill Plan in Lakeville, Mass., dated October twentieth, two thousand and eleven."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And if you wouldn't mind speaking to this motion?
Yes, Springbrook Lane is a subdivision in the town of Lakeville. It's off of Kingland Street. And it's been, it's been two years since it's gotten the roadway top coat finished. We generally allow that to be approved. I believe there's money in an escrow account for the, the town to make, you know, to make sure that we have some minor repairs. And so we had a, a meeting, and we voted to approve it.
Okay, so the planning board recommends approval.
Yes, sir.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Yes, the finance committee does recommend approval.
Is there any further discussion on this? Yes?
I don't want to stand in the way of adjournment, but I guess through, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the planning board, does this include the, any retention ponds and detention basins that are included with, with that roadway?
Yes.
That's an affirmative. Those are, there are easements, retention basins, the waterways, the pipes, even under the road. Those are all easements that are incorporated into the subdivision plan.
Are there any further questions or comments on this article? Seeing no one rising, it requires a majority. Would all those in favor of Article Twenty-Eight, please raise your cards? Thank you. You may lower them. Any opposed to Article Twenty-Eight, please raise your cards? I see none. I declare the vote passes by unanimous vote. I would entertain a motion to dissolve this in town voting.
Don't move.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, any opposed? Thank you for coming. Thank you for participating.